Thursday, July 27th, 2019. Please rise for the play.
I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And clerk.
Praying with me please. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless these proceedings. May everything said and done here be according to your will and may it benefit the citizens of Jersey County. We ask it in Jesus' name.
Amen. Rule call.
Ms. Brainer?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Ms. Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Heitzig?
Here.
Ms. Curbach?
Here.
Mr. Keeney?
Here.
Mr. Kruger?
Here.
Chairman Little?
Here.
Ms. Mossman?
Here.
Mr. Ponsor?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Okay, this is a special meeting. We'll start out with public comment. Comment, questions?
Got some information that I'd like to make sure that the board gets. It is explaining what the difference is between bonding and insurance coverage is. It is actually a copy of a statute with regard to contractor bonds and licensing, how it integrates within the different counties, and then a sample ordinance that takes in everything instead of just liability coverage. So, I would respectfully hand that off. It covers everything.
Talking about what's based on the Contractor Unified License and Ferment Bond Act, PTILCS, 830 slash, et cetera, et cetera.
It's all, it's all in there. Now, the draft copy, as it was first proposed, it did not cover workers' compensation, liability insurance, and bonding. If somebody has an accident on your property, it might be your homeowner's that ends up taking care of that. That's why a person has liability insurance as a contractor. If a person has, doesn't have workers' compensation and has employees, that person could actually come back on your insurance carrier, on your homeowner's, to have them pay for them being harmed on your property. So that's why workers' compensation is important. The other thing that's even more vitally important to cover everybody, especially with regard to this flood, is a bond. So, most all larger projects, you end up having to do a performance bond of some sort. So, the state has a mechanism that you can get a unified contractor's bond essentially that allows you to work in whatever county if you've got this thing in place. Now, while that's good, there may be times down the road that you might actually want to make that a little bit different to where the bond has to be at least equal to the value of the job that the person is supposed to do for you. So, while I understand what you're trying to do based on your document that you did, rather than do something and have to go back over it later, to talk about it now and to get it hammered outright the first time and make sure that the person has to have all three of the aspects like a stool, it's going to be better. So that's my comment.
Anyone else? Okay. And the business for tonight is what's sent out in the packet. This was drafted by the state's attorney based upon, I believe, DuPage County ordinance. It's an ordinance requiring registration and ensuring that contractors performing work within the unincorporated area of Jersey County. This, a similar broad-brush proposal, or not proposal, but a document was suggested by the Illinois Attorney General's Office based upon their experience on past disaster areas, particularly floods. And we, they met with the state's attorney, I had a long conversation with one of the investigators that was down early last week. This is, again, for unincorporated areas, providing for the registration and a registration fee. This is basically being proposed as a deterrent for outside storm chasers that frankly I would expect based upon my experience with the Missouri Attorney General's Office working in disaster areas will be soon coming, particularly in the Grafton and Elsa areas. This handles the basic type of work that would be proposed, but it's also was suggested of having a registration fee that would probably deter outside contractors coming in and either performing work or taking payments from consumers and either doing a slipshot job or no work at all. That again has been my experience in working in some of these areas when outside contractors come in and basically chase storms in disaster conditions. I'm going to open it up now for discussion. Two other items. Elsa was contacted, the mayor, and I guess the council has decided that they do not want in on this proposal or document through any type of intergovernmental agreement with Jersey County. I've talked to Mayor Everland in the last 36 hours, and they are going to enact a similar document, but they're going to do it on their own and enforce it on their own.
What is unincorporated? Is Fielden incorporated?
They are an incorporated town. It's every area that does not have a municipality. Delhite, Delhite, for instance, Dow would be unincorporated areas in the county, but Fielden, Grafton, Elsa would be incorporated areas, and we basically have no jurisdiction there with this type of ordinance.
Is this ordinance strictly due to flood victims?
It's, you can't limit it to a particular area, but you can provide or put up provisions that would hopefully, again, use the term provider deterrent from outside of the county storm chasers coming in in order to turn them off.
How's it going to affect all of the people that do their homework?
It doesn't affect them at all.
How about if they are the general when they're hiring somebody to do the drywall? You know what I mean?
No, I don't know what you mean.
I jumbled my own house, and I had friends who came in and did my drywall for me. My father-in-law came in and stayed in the house for me. He's a painter.
You had friends?
Yes. These were friends that I-
It doesn't affect-
Doesn't affect them to help.
If you were able to talk somebody to come in-
Did you compensate them though?
In what way?
Well, it says in here. It says if you have somebody do the work for you, if you don't compensate them, they don't need a permit, but if you compensate them, you, they have to have a permit. That's what I'm, I mean, it's in here.
Well, these are bona fide businesses that would be required to register.
And that is all, all the people in Jersey County that own a business, like heating and construction?
Anyone that is coming in to do work would be required to register and pay the fee.
You hire somebody like, say, somebody that just does like handiwork, just, you know, like somebody that you, like Scott Ponsor kind of lives by me, and I hire him to come and review my bathroom for me, but I'm paying him. Does he have to get a-
Is he in business as a general contractor, or are you a-
Does he have to form a business if he's going to come and fix my bathroom?
No.
Okay.
Again, this would be bona fide businesses or purporting to be businesses. In some, in some instances, you will have somebody come in from now to the area, and they may have a business card, and they may have a sign on their vehicle that says, sorry, Scott, Scott Ponsor-
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay.
-general contracting. They may be from Evansville, Indiana, they may be from South St. Louis, but they know that there's opportunity here.
Sure. So they are claiming to be a business?
They are, they may be claiming to be a business. If they're purporting to be a business, if they're purporting to be a general contractor or specific contractor for the work that would be required by a contractor, that would be performed by a contractor, they would be required to register. Take their time, you then start figuring out who's for real, who isn't.
Correct.
So then could he just say, "I'm not really a business, I'm just, I'm good at this, I'm going around doing it"?
You know, nothing is, nothing is perfect, Mary, and if somebody is willing, part of this, government cannot protect everyone. Like, try, but part of it is going to be up to either the common sense of the consumer to protect themselves, get multiple bids, check out who it is they're dealing with. But if they decide, hey, this sounds like a good deal, and they've got nothing else to go on other than it sounds like a good deal, right?
Yep.
You, you- Does it exclude our locals?
No.
There's no way to exclude our local guys?
Cannot exclude the locals from-
So like, if you build a house, like if I built a house out in the country, let's say we, Mr. Lord, everything, what you would have to pay as a general, he'd have to pay a $500 fee, and then be adding subcontractors that would be required to pay the $200 also?
Correct.
And the price of that house just went up by probably $25,000 because the contractor's going to charge the guy who wants to work that fee, so the works, the taxpayers are going to be paying for this.
Are the taxpayers going to be paid for this?
They're going to be paying for this because, let's just say-
The homework.
The homework.
The homework.
Yeah.
And the homework is taxpayer. So anybody that wants to do work is going to have a contractor come in, who has to pay this fee. And if he has, you know, a general contractor, and let's just say, you know, a house, you got a plumber, electrician, gunned down all this, so he's going to have, so that entity of contractor is going to have to pay you $2,500 to $3,000, and they're going to transfer that money to the guy that wants to do the work.
I assume you know that they have a lot more than one job per year? This is an annual fee?
Yeah. It's, it's every year.
Right.
But all it's an annual fee, it's not for a job.
No, annual fee. It's annual.
But now, just so I understand, so, rippers typically have people come and go, come and go, come and do. So they would have to, every time they had new people, they'd have to come and register for you, right?
No, it's, it's the overall business.
And if you have subcontractors, like you say, it would be sub, so maybe just hire them. Yeah, okay. I like the concept, I just don't know if I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
I, you know, I want to protect our local people, the guys that can ride, but I, in that, in that process, I don't want to penalize them unnecessarily.
Unfortunately, you can't, you can't, you know, ideally, I'd love to be able to rely on the locals to do the work, get the jobs, and stop the others from, at the border. Can't. This board can't. So it's, it's a matter of, and, and it's a matter of you keep things at status quo and hope that people are going to make good decisions and not get put on the hook, or you try something else.
Isn't it typical that a electrician, heating and cooling, that they have to have state license anyway?
There are, there are some trades that require-
Why can't the county just have them come pay a fee and register, show their license?
That's state license.
That's not what I mean, but if our local contractors that are here come up here to the county and register for a fee, but not, I think $500 is very high for our local people. Every year.
This, this board can adjust.
Yeah.
This is a starting place for discussion. Either, either the entire document can be scrapped on whatever reason, or you can adjust the fee, you can make whatever adjustment that this board chooses to make. But bear in mind, if we're least interested in trying to deter nefarious storm chasers from, from coming in and victimizing people a second time, that, that window is, is closing because you've got water that's, that's receding, and you can expect people coming in.
It is, but I don't think we should rush through this, you know, I know the time is coming because it's on its way down, but I, I think this is a rush to, unless we can come together and make, if anybody is in agreement or disagreement, to make the changes. But I think that's hard for local, in my district, we have some little, little-time contractors that, you know, their trade, they're little. I don't think they can afford a $500 fee every year, you know? That's just my-
Okay.
So, we're going to license for the unincorporated areas, and then Grafton's going to have a license, and Elsa's going to have a license, is Jerseyville going to have a license?
I guess potentially Jerseyville could. Grafton is going to do, is going to basically mirror this, but make adjustments in the, in the fee schedule. I have no idea what Elsa is planning on doing, other than they express the interest to, that they would handle things on their own and not partner up with the county, which is their right. We cannot, we as a county board cannot enforce anything on Elsa or, or Grafton because they're bona fide municipalities with the ability to make their own rules.
So this is just to, by attaching this fee, whatever fee we decide, it's to, it's to prevent people from coming in and basically hoodwinking somebody into saying that they can do the work and, and then doing a crummy job.
In the, in the unincorporated areas, anything that, that is a municipality, city, village, town, is out of the mix here. This is only in those spots, and I have no idea what type of damage you're looking at down in the Nutwood area or around the bend before you would get, that would require any contracting work for-
Okay.
The ones that, well, I'm not even sure that they've allowed to rebuild.
That is probably going to be up to, I assume FEMA will come back in on this.
FEMA, I-
So another thing that scares me, and I know we can predict and prevent everything, but, so, what I've seen in the past, and dealt with, and fear, is that you've got fly-by-nights coming in, they're going to knock on a lady's door, old lady's going to say, "Oh, absolutely, thank you so much, thanks for being nice to me, and fixing my, whatever, whatever." She pays them the full amount up front, she doesn't know any better, and the guy's gone. So, we can do this all day long, but that guy's going to be gone, and I hope that people who are paying $500 are going to take me out.
This or any other document, it is not going to be a perfect-
You're right.
A perfect tool to try and deter a-
You're right.
-outside intervention by, by people who are more interested in ripping people off than, than not.
Then the second piece is enforcement, and I'd like to hear from Cindy, you know, who has, does, or does somebody have time to be checking up on all this, because it says that they're going to go inspect and make sure that the work is being done, you know, and for the ones that it's just a checkbox, okay, you know, yeah, you're doing the work all right, and this is great, you know, everything's going fine, that's easy, but when you've got one who's half-assing it, and, you know, that's going to be multiple trips to that location, and then, you know, if they're not following it, is, who's going to enforce that, and is Ben going to take that to court, you know?
Uh-
I said, the concept is great, I just think we have a lot of details, we have to make sure that we're-
Under Section 11 enforcement, provisions of this ordinance shall at times be the responsibility of the Jersey County Building Official Code Enforcement Office to regularly inspect the sites and contractors' activities to see that the same of being conducted and operated in accordance with requirements of all laws and ordinances applicable hereto or thereto. In addition to the building official, the Jersey County Sheriff's Department shall have authority to make inspection and issue citations for violations. Section 12 penalty, any person who violates any provision of this ordinance or fails to comply with any requirements thereof shall be guilty of an offense punishable by a fine of $500 for their first offense, for a second offense, $1,500, for a third offense, $2,500. Each day that a violation continues shall be deemed a separate offense. The imposition of any sentence shall be, shall not exempt the offender from compliance with the requirements of the ordinance. So it will be the code enforcement office, the sheriff, if they happen to see any activity. But again, if it is, this is not a panacea, a perfect instrument on this, it's also going to be dependent upon the common sense and following some good advice and information that, hopefully, that will be provided for those who take advantage of it at the, on June 30th at the Mark Center, where you'll have representatives from a variety of state agencies, particularly from the Attorney General's Office, on how to avoid being hooked.
How many unincorporated areas are there in Jersey County?
Jerseyville.
Elsa.
Elsa, Grafton, Fielden, part of Brighton.
Part of Brighton.
Is in Jersey County. And Fidel.
Fidel, yes.
There can be two different fees for local people compared to out, out-of-county contractors?
Not that I've been told. Now, I don't have the-
I mean, could you take it to the local people, I mean, why force $500 on them?
What do the local people think? I'm interested to hear. I mean, do you want that to pre, do you think this will prevent the fly-by-nights?
What little bit that I've heard is, is the locals are getting punished, and I, I see very few fly-by-nights. We all kind of talk, I've talked to most all the small contractors, we all kind of work together, know each other. We don't see a problem anyway, and the, the fly-by-nights are not going to be forced to pay $500. Guess who is? The local people that have been doing a good job for 30 years.
Well, that's my view. I mean, I've said-
I don't see a problem that needs correcting.
Well, this was brought up, this was brought up six or seven months ago by a local guy, by a local contractor. He did bring it to us and said, because he was worried about people coming in from outside.
Heck, have we all seen that? I haven't seen it. So maybe it brought to attention to maybe weed out some small people or something, but I don't know why that happened, but-
Yeah, I don't know.
It just seems to be-
But he did come in front of the board before we set up the new board.
I mean, as far as Grafton goes, I mean, I've worked in Grafton all day today alongside just purely a mechanical and layered heating and cooling, I mean, we're all doing work there, we all talk, we all get along. I haven't seen any fly-by-night guys coming in and throwing signs and jards, but those are the first people that aren't going to pay a $500 fine, because they're not going to read the Jersey County Journal, and they're not going to know, they're going to come in and go where we're all going to be burdened with this, with this licensing.
Yeah, how do they know they have to do this?
Is there going to have to car or something that they're going to, it cares?
It all depends on getting a permit. And the shoddy ones will say, "Yeah, I'm going to get a permit, I'm going to get a permit."
So you have to have a permit to do, put it in HVAC?
Yeah, I don't even know what it involves. I mean, if I'm fixed, I'm, I bounce all over the county.
No, do you have to get a permit?
I have to be EPA certified-
I know, from the government. Permit from the city?
No. No, 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 I don't have to get a permit.
The only time I get a permit, I think, is to-
Is to do a building, yeah, and then I'm usually a subcontractor at that point. I just don't see how it's going to stop the fly-by-nights that I haven't seen. It's just going to be a whole bunch of the local guys, that I know all of them, all have to pay $500 a year to do what they've been doing for years. It makes no sense to me at all.
And you may have to pay another $500 to do work in Grafton if they announce-
Right, and I don't think so. I've talked to Grafton people, I grew up there, and I grew up in Elsa, in school of Grafton.
Well, unless the mayor was, unless the mayor was, and I haven't had that experience, unless he's just talking out of his hat, this will probably be brought up to the city council. It's being, it's being pushed by their city attorney as a good idea.
The Elsa or Grafton?
Grafton.
Okay.
I have no idea what Elsa's going to do, other than they have refused, they have declined any, any intergovernmental agreement for any enforcement down there. What they choose to do is their business. It's their, it's whatever their relationship is with their constituents as far as providing whatever protection they can. Folks, I'm not wanting to scare anybody, I'm just, this has been brought up to us and highly recommended, at least by the Attorney General's Office, the state's attorney also recommends it, but obviously, you are accountable to your own good decisions and to your own constituents.
Is there any way we could look into finding out if the locals could have, they can just pay, you say, $50 fee in here?
How you want to do that, Nick?
To where the outside contractors, non-locals, pay something different?
The state's attorney will probably be back in his office on Monday. He's out of town on a conference right now. Otherwise, he would be here tonight.
I think the only thing you could possibly do there would be a resident versus a non-resident of the state of Illinois. I don't think you can do a, a resident of Jersey County and a non-resident of Jersey County.
I don't think you can either, but I don't know that much.
I mean, I went behind a lot of jobs where people hired somebody and they do halfway jobs, especially with the roofs, you know? And I got to go back and fix it, and they already, they've already spent the insurance money, it's already gone. Now, now they got to start digging in their pocket, and so I can try to fix it up so it will last, because they always cheat in different areas. But, so I see that, I understand that, and I think a way to stop that from happening is good, for sure. But the only other thing that I, I mean, we talk about storm chasers, okay? It's said, it's being said in such a negative context, and like, storm chasers are the evil people. There's a lot of good, legitimate people that travel from one disaster to another, one storm to another. I know a lot of them, and they're good guys, and good, they do good work, and they make a great living. But without them, you couldn't get a lot of these communities rebuilt. You got to have them coming in, and true, there is some bad ones, but, you know, without them, I mean, they're not all bad, they're, they're good. And you got to have a certain percentage of that. But I agree, you know, keeping the, we're, keeping the people that take advantage of some people is good too.
What if, what if we can reduce the fee, and then put in a clause that if you are registered in another Jersey County municipality, we wait for you? So, you know, he's already registered in Grafton, he has to register in Jersey, but we're not going to charge him again, something like that.
That's kind of what I thought originally, is that, you know, I registered with the courthouse 26 years ago, that our business had happened, and I would think that everybody that did that should be exempt, but if you're wanting to stop outside people, then, but I don't know how you contact the outside people to force them to pay their fines, if they don't know the rules, and then they just float in. I guess you can pull in and maybe fine them, or, in Portland then, but-
So the whole purpose is not necessarily- So the whole purpose is not necessarily to keep them out, but to make sure that they're legit. So they're getting licensed and insured upon whatever, you know, whatever's required, that's what we're getting. Make sure people are legit. So that would do that.
Do you have a document up there that you can start scratching on as far as what your language is?
So that's the whole purpose of things, is not to keep, necessarily to keep people out, just to make sure that they're legit when they're doing it.
Correct.
So, your point is good in that the outside people aren't going to know they have to do it. You know, do all these kinds of things and that's all going to work for some, it's not going to work for all. So the next phase is the enforcement, which is falls on in the city's life it sounds like, possibly sheriff's office, that if somebody, I mean, somebody's just going to flat out have to drag the county looking for outside contractors and say, hey, I already registered. Hey, I already registered. You got your register. You got your register. So, that's not impossible, but...
I would also hope that local contractors would keep an eye out on their neighbors and such and if there's a strange contractor or somebody that appears to be doing work, drop a dime on them and find out whether, so that the county can check and see where they are.
Yeah, see if they're insured and, yeah.
And registered.
Registered as in registering with the courthouse, which maybe I am, I mean, I know I was, maybe I can re-register or something.
Well, it'd be registration under this new ordinance, whatever it was.
With whatever that would require. And hopefully not $500 a year that kind of punishes the locals because again, the outside guys aren't going to pay that. Unless they're caught.
And I don't know that it has to be high to do, this is my opinion, I don't know that it has to be a high fee in order to accomplish what we're doing. All we want to do is make them come in and register. If they're legit and they know about it, they're going to do it, especially if it's $100 or $200. If it's $500, they're less likely to try and scare. I mean, they're more likely to...
Right, especially if they're trying to rip people off in the first place. I mean, there are a lot of people dead.
Right.
But then there's loads at Home Depot and all that that come in and, you know, unmarked trucks and minivans, which I don't care if they do or they don't, but they're coming in and they're unknown contractors, you know? You buy windows from Home Depot, well, it's an outside contractor that the windows get delivered and he rolls in, you know, without labels or anything or no one knows and he starts doing a project. I don't have a big complaint against that, I'm not in that business, but how do you, how do you police that?
The only way is for somebody to be dragging it around, looking for it, or, you know, you guys are...
Yeah, yeah.
Respectfully, respectfully...
Excuse me, excuse me. We, the, keep in mind that we're not going to be enforcing Elsa or we're not going to be enforcing any other municipality within those municipal limits. That's up to the local officials. So we're only, we are restricted to unincorporated areas that have been... That is the thing to keep in mind.
I think the fee is the biggest part of the deal. $500, that's what everybody has to promise.
If your fee is lower, Mary made a great point there, but your fine is higher, where a guy comes in and is shaking, okay, you guys pay your $100. Because, and we waive it if you pay in Grafton or whatever, we set up that way. But sheriff goes out and finds, we got some character who hasn't paid his $100. Instead of being a, whatever the fine is, was the first time was $500, you say, okay, the first time was $1,500. Are they going to be less likely to come in and try to pull a fast one if we catch it? Now, we won't catch them all.
That would be more like that for our other guys to turn a guy in, get him out of the, get him out of here, but then again, do we all want to like run off somebody from Walton or spring through?
Well, I don't know if we want to run them off, but I think it's only, isn't it only level playing field if they're doing the same as what you're doing? Because they're coming in profit from us or from a local. So, you know, from a local homeowner, so it just levels the playing field a little bit. If they come in and do it illegally, maybe they get away with it, maybe they don't. If they don't get away with it, they get handled with $1,500 fee. They might sit and go, you know, that $100 isn't, isn't very expensive, I'll go get registered. And then we get a chance to look them up.
And they're doing a local job, $100.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's...
You gotta get them all or something. They're going to come in and probably do more on the edge of the counties than just one job. They're, and even if you're coming in doing a big job and you're going to make $6,000, $7,000, $100 registration fee isn't terrible. At least it legitimizes, gives us a chance to look at them.
Well, and, I mean, we are talking, we've got to remember too, the emergency is the flood. We're talking, this is a year-long, you know, the registration piece for the whole year. Now, some of these guys are from waterway, aren't going to be back probably.
The emergencies, the flood, the Grafton and Elsa are not involved in this.
Right.
And so the Nutwood area, just a handful of residences there that are damaged, a lot is far abroad, but you know, the biggest flood damage as far as repair work is, is Elsa and Grafton, Chautauqua, which are not even part of this conversation.
I live in unincorporated though, and if I got ripped off and Fielden was, had some rules in that, that kept them from getting ripped off, and I got ripped off, I'd be off of P.O. at the county board for not at least investigating them. So from an unincorporated, and I know we say it's only very few houses, we say that the guy living in that wood, it's still important to him.
Most all of them are hiring fly-by-night people.
Right.
I just don't see the problem.
Sure, no, I totally get it.
I mean, I'm sure the problem exists somewhere, but I haven't seen it.
I totally get what you're saying, but I, and I agree in that aspect. I just think we gotta be careful about saying, well, Grafton has more people than...
Right, right, right. I didn't want to come off like that.
No, I want to make sure everybody, since we're not coming off that, we're trying to protect the person and their property. Nobody wants to see somebody get ripped off.
No, no.
None of us.
What is Chautauqua doing?
I have no idea. They're an unincorporated area.
Are they...
They, they're not a municipality, Chautauqua.
I didn't think so.
No. Talking about Elsa, I don't know. I guess they're going to stick with what they have.
No, they're totally correct.
You can't get in, even the sheriff can't go in there if he doesn't...
That's right, they are...
I guess. They probably do that.
So what is it?
They are under the same rules as anybody else. They have to follow floodplain regulations. They have to go down there and do assessments on them. And I just want to point out too, it's not just in that wood. We have all kinds of flooding in unincorporated county on the south side. I've got bell trees I can't even get to.
Affected by creeks.
Yeah, I've got 20 miles of floodplain.
Well, and Ben made a really good point, you know, a tornado could rip through this whole county tomorrow and it all applies to that, you know? You know, there are a lot of jobs in unincorporated areas. Not affected by the flood, but within the next year, it may be affected by some accounts.
So it's flood today?
Yeah.
Today or tomorrow? I have, I'm at a loss as far as what other natural disaster could be possible.
Well, say, you know, the last year, two years ago, had that horrible rainstorm and there were tents that popped up all over the city. We're driving and they picture your fence and people are gone and a lot of people out there. I mean, I'm not saying they are, that's not the point, but it does have to be something and it doesn't have to be something as severe as the flood that takes...
A certificate of insurance and a general liability policy and a fee does not protect the people having the work done. The only thing that will protect the people that are having the work done is a bond, a performance bond. And it makes sure that the contractor, if he walks away on the job, if he takes product and doesn't finish and the person gets contractor lien, gets a mechanic's lien on their property, it means that that person can be made whole. By having liability insurance with the registration scheme, that doesn't protect anyone. It generates fees, but it doesn't necessarily protect the people from an out-of-town fly-by-nighter. That was the whole point about having a triad of things, you need workers comp on people coming in, they need general liability, and they also need a bond. So when you're going to hire somebody, do you hire somebody who's bonded or do you have somebody that's like, well, I'm not bonded, then you can trust me? We're going to hire the person that's bonded. That's what the whole Illinois statute is about because once they meet that particular level, you can say, okay, you've met the state standard, you don't have to apply a different standard to them. So that's what this whole thing was that I presented you with, was a sample, a sample ordinance plus the reasons as to why you need all three and also explaining what the bond does because without a bond, there is no guarantee that anything will ever get fixed, ever.
A contractor shed box. Give us a contractor shed box.
We thought, I would buy a certain job that was over a certain amount of money if I was required by a municipality or a federal agency or something, but you don't really just carry a bond with you all the time. They're, they're sickened to a job. Work comp, liability insurance.
Well, in, in talking to Ben and back and forth over the last couple, three days, again, he is, it's his belief and recommendation that you need to start with at least an initial document. You can always add on or amend later. And there may be something coming up at the June or the July 10th meeting, but I don't have the language that I would be comfortable with from the State's Attorney as far as any additional, any additions to this. Again, it's, for what it's worth, it's my recommendation that we would at least start with a basic document. Now, we can always, we can make any adjustments since that appears to be the thoughts of the board as far as what the, the level of registration fee would be. But obviously that's up to the board to decide whether they want to go with this as an adjustment, not go with it at all, or revisit it later. Sure, Sheriff.
What happened, Sheriff Brian Van Vinkle, Sheriff of Ogilvy County called me. He gave up a week of his job to work for Aima and come out and help us out. Sheriff Brian said, what do you have in place as far as the county goes and this type of stuff? I said, we don't have anything. When he took office first time, four years ago, they had a tornado come through Ogilvy County and his house was also one of them, got destroyed. And the Attorney General's Office came in and they screened all the businesses that was coming. And they themselves kept the bad ones out, kept the good ones in. And I think the colored plaques they put on their vehicles were purple. So when you drove through the areas that was affected, you only purple placard came in. Everybody else was kicked out. And when I heard that, I thought, this could be a really good idea for us to get something started because as you said, we did have a local business owner and he did come here a few months ago and wanted something in. And you made a very good point in that if a city has something and I don't, living in the county, you're going to be mad about it. This gentleman made a good point, piggybacking off what that guy said about four or five months ago in a meeting here, that he's tired of following up shoddy work, more or less. So if we could get something in place to protect our people, that's just where we're at. So as I sat over there the other day and I'm racking my brain and I apologize, I'm sick and I'm tired and the flush just about kicked my butt, and walks in Attorney General Agent Kevin Meadows. I don't only see a good agent, he's my friend. And he says, I got you, Mikey. We'll screen everyone coming through here and I'll keep the sex offenders out too. I don't know what's coming into our county. I don't have a clue, but anything you can do to help me out would be greatly appreciated. Now, when I'm gathering here listening to you talk, it's a good idea. You all kind of think something needs to be in place, but maybe we're going a little bit too fast. So how about we do this? How about we then slow down a little bit? How about maybe you have a meeting with all your businesses, get everybody's perspective, come up with something that makes everybody happy and something that gives me a chance? Because you know the first person getting a phone call that gets ripped off by some knucklehead? This guy. So if you could think about it, put something together to help us out and help our community out a little person. Thank you.
All right. Which committee?
Shouldn't it be legislative?
Pardon?
Shouldn't it be legislative?
Legislative.
Yeah. Mary, you want it? Okay. This is a starting point right here. I would like to have something to act on at the July 10th meeting. Hopefully this isn't too late.
So legislative people, let's come up with a date. I know, like, we have over our time, but if we wait till I go and then email Kelly and she emails everybody.
Kelly's out tomorrow, so the county clerk can certainly make notifications.
What about Monday? Is that too soon? Oh, yeah, we have to come. That's right, it needs Thursday.
Forty-eight hours.
Tuesday, no?
But that's the business day, right?
Friday, Monday?
Tuesday's an early day if you do it.
Tuesday, what, what time?
Seven? Six o'clock?
Okay, Tuesday, six for legislative. Well, one of you please ask Kelly to let Kelly know.
I can make sure it's posted tomorrow. Can you give me an agenda so, or at least a description so we can...
Do you want to just use the same...
You'll do this.
Okay.
I don't know how you're going to invite contractors. You have two here tonight.
You got a couple just to have some ideas.
Well, I don't want somebody else saying, you left me out of the mix. Why did those two guys get to have home to say? Realize the responsibility...
Nobody knew about it.
Realize the responsibility that you carry.
If we hold it in here in case we...
Yep.
Okay.
So family, put that on...
Yeah, we've been talking most of the day, but nobody believed it. That's, that's how I feel.
I couldn't care less about my daddy.
Yeah, that's not a huge deal. You know, do business for 27 years and don't pay $500 per year to do your business, no. Somebody has to pay that $500.
All right. Legislative will meet on Tuesday, July, what is, what's the date?
Second.
Second. At six o'clock here. And then the item of business will be this document.
And everybody's...
Yeah.
Okay, second bite at the apple on public comment. All right, there are none. No other business. Motion for mileage and for dying. Jared, Ed, Paul.
Ms. Drainer? Yes. Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Heitzig?
Yes.
Mr. Penelikan?
Yes.
Ms. Kerbat?
Yes.
Mr. Pengick?
Yes.
Mr. Kruger?
Yes.
Senator Little?
Yes.
Ms. Mossman?
Yes.
Mr. Tonsor?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
There will be some folks coming up from the Lock Haven, Elsa Hills area. I've copied Mary, Brian and Mark on this, the issues of trying to figure out, to try to figure out how to improve cell service down there. And then Tom Klassen will be meeting with that same group, I believe, on July 2nd to discuss accessibility in and out of those areas because this will not be the last flood we will ever experience in Jersey County.
I was going to say, yeah, I think that's...
Plans are easy. It's payment is difficult, more difficult. So we will have probably a light agenda other than presentation by the folks from down in the southern end of the county. And in this, I don't see much else, but all of the pool.
Meetings at 6:30, right?
Meetings at 6:30, claims needs to do their work earlier.
That's on the 10th?
That is on the 10th.
I'll be gone, sorry. I have work. I will let you know, I'll send an email.
All right. Now... Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Kruger? Mr. Pang. All those in favor, 65 of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.